This inaugural meeting of the South Georgia Regional School Committee will come to order. First off, we will have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent, please call the roll.
Dr. Craftries?
Here.
Mr. DePazio?
Here.
Ms. DiTomaso?
Here.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Flaherty is not here. Mr. Hagmeyer?
Here.
Mr. Kirkley?
Mr. Lacatelle?
Here.
Mrs. Ladizori?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Armacost is not here. We have an open seat in Washington. Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
And our student rep will not be here tonight.
Thank you. We have official recorders going on. Is there anybody who is recording this meeting that I'm not aware of? In that case, I will announce that as this committee knows, the public probably doesn't know is that John Armacost has resigned. So I'll supervise this meeting so far tonight. What I would like to do and suggest to this committee is that we move the nominations of a full-time, permanent chair to the end of the meeting if that's acceptable to the rest of the committee. In that case, the first item is responses from the audience. And because this is a public hearing on budget, let's have responses only on other topics initially. Are there any responses from the audience? In that case, we will start with the budget review. And what this is, is a hearing for the public so that the public can hear all about the budget. Then the public can ask questions. The committee has had numerous opportunities to ask budgets, ask questions about the budget, so that the public have the floor at least initially. So.
Okay. On the start, we will go through the budget that we are proposing for the FY '20 school year. We will go through several different components of the budget again tonight for the public hearing. Certainly, we will include what the objectives are, what this budget is set out to accomplish. On behalf of our students, our staff, and our community, we will talk about any staffing revisions, increases and decreases, and then Ms. Velkowsky will get into the details of where the budget is coming from. So again, we have talked throughout this process that we really have prioritized a fiscally responsible budget, knowing that there are pressures on the community at this time coming from multiple different areas, but doing so with three core areas being in mind. And we really have prioritized making sure that we sustain what we have built and we continue to add where we need. When we talk about a tiered model of education, we talk about making sure we have what we need in our classroom teachers, our general education model. We do have current levels of staffing maintained. We do have a couple of places at the middle school that you'll see decreases tied to enrollment, but you will not see any programmatic decreases, anything of that nature. We've also tried to make sure that we have the interventions we need, which is Tier Two. Those are interventions to support general education students who require a little bit more support, and we have added in that area, as Al highlight. And then our Tier Three, again, all students start as general education students, and some students do require some specialized instruction on top of it, and we have added a special education teacher where we felt there was a need. The expanded coaching model really speaks to Tier One. We are adding a coach that is to support the instruction that happens in the classroom and really making sure we can meet the needs of all our learners through UDL. So again, as I mentioned, the budget has a specific addition of an instructional coach. This is well timed. You're going to hear our presentation tonight about instructional coaching and the impacts it has had in Central Berkshire and why we feel it's important to have a full-time coach based at NESCIS, as well as to sustain the coaching we have at the elementary and enhance it at the high school. You are where the fourth special ed teacher at Craneville, we are trying to add right now in maintaining what we have added over the course of the past few budgets. So again, the revisions really talk to what I have spoken of, where you do see shifts in staffing. It is a result we have a population going into NESCIS now in all three grades that is smaller than what we've seen, so we need to make some final adjustments to make sure we have staffing in relation to our student population. So a couple of our NESCIS staff will go to Hittredge and Beckett in interventionist models, and then a couple of our NESCIS staff will go to the high school. We do have more retirements at the high school this year than we've seen in my career in Central Berkshire. We actually have seven retirements at the high school. We have a retirement at the middle school as well that came in after this was complete, so it's actually eight total retirements at the secondary level. Five of those retirements at the high school will be replaced, but one at the middle school will as well. We do see a small budget savings when those retirements happen and are replaced, but obviously not as significant as when we can fill with capacity. And we do have two NESCIS teachers who will fill roles of retiring Wocona teachers. We continue to have, and I continue to dialogue with Chief Hope, our part-time resource officer, primarily to support our middle and high school. And our BCBA, that's a Board Certified Behavioral Analysis, really works with teachers, students, and families to decrease behaviors and increase pro-social behavior in our students. We do have this right now, but we have it on a limited basis because we contract with an agency for it. Obviously, our ideal would be to have somebody on staff full-time, so that's what that is. We do have some increases in the budget as we've discussed, primarily in the contract with salaries. We do have a transportation contract that has a built-in 4% increase. We're seeing some increase in our student services transportation. When students are not educated in one of our five buildings, we do have to transport them, and we have seen an increase in the amount of students who are not educated here and as a result in the transportation. Our charter school assessment is up slightly. Ms. Velkowsky will talk about our school choice is actually in the opposite situation, but our charter school reimbursement, when students first go to charter schools, you get 100% reimbursement, then it declines steadily to nothing. And we have, most of our charter school students have been there for a while now, so we're not seeing reimbursement that we were. We talked about this, this is a snapshot in time, out of district tuition with special ed. We've gone through the process that when a family and/or a student is moved into this district, if a placement has been made elsewhere, we do own the bill for that placement, regardless if we made the placement or even if the student actually is going to be a part of the community in any way. So we have seen an increase with foster care placements and families moving in and out of districts in that area. Behavioral services is up here. You'll see in the next slide that contracted services is down. So we're trying to add a full-time staff member to replace what we contract for part-time right now. Ms. Velkowsky has talked extensively that we have seen an increase in our utilities costs specifically from one of our towns. Our decreases, again, we've talked about insurance. Some of this is due to the low increase from the Berkshire Health Group, as well as people moving in and off of plan, people who are retiring. We do have one change in health services. That was a result of a mid-year retirement with a change in salary. Sometimes when we have a retirement mid-year, it's not until the next budget that you're going to see the decrease. Same thing here. We had one staff member go part-time, another staff member go full-time, and there was a differential in salaries. This is important to remember, and we are going to talk about this later. This is a decrease in the FY '20 budget we are proposing. It is not a decrease in what we are purchasing and supporting in technology. We were able to use grant funding, as well as a significant portion of our rural aid to allow our tech director, Mr. Surgis, to make those purchases now, so we get our offsetting budget. Same story here. We are not getting rid of a van. We do need this special ed van, but what we've done to date is lease it over time. We're now going to purchase it, so you'll see that decline in this budget and in future budgets. Again, as I mentioned, there would be a decline in what we contract for if we have a BCBA on staff who can do some of the work we have been contracting and contracted in psychological services for. So again, with all of that said and done, where we are right now compared to where we were somewhere around March 14th of last year is right here at $239,402 above, which is a 0.87% increase. We don't see anything major changing between now and final adoption, but that obviously can only go down from there.
So the revenue that we anticipate receiving in the fiscal year 2020 for the budget is broken out on this slide, and you can see Chapter 70, which is the state aid for our foundation aid, is at 8.757 million, which is an increase of $48,000 year-over-year. Chapter 71 revenue is reimbursement for transportation expenditures, and that is typically funded at about 70%, 60 to 70%, and that's the number that you see here at 833-611, which is an increase over last year, a very small increase, but it is an increase. We, the school committee voted to adopt the Transportation Revolving Fund, and we have been able to put funding into that account the last few years, and this year that's enabled us to apply $400,000 of that money to offset transportation expenditures. Charter school reimbursement, this is a number, again, as superintendent spoke about, with students that are going to charter school, you are reimbursed depending on the year that they're in, in their charter school career. The year gives you how much you're going to get for that student in reimbursement funding. So you can see that it is an increase year-over-year, and this comes directly from the state. They give us this number. I plug it into the budget. The other revenue here is, we have small items, such as interest income, Medicaid reimbursement, miscellaneous income. The interest income is income interest on the bank accounts that the district has. The Medicaid reimbursement is reimbursement for Medicaid services the district provides to students. The miscellaneous income is, could be a refund from a vendor, small amounts of revenue that come in, go into that category. And then, of course, there's E&amp;D appropriation of budget guidelines specify how much to appropriate in the next budget, and this year that number is 1122136, a small increase over last year's. Town assessments are the last piece of the pie, or the first piece of the pie, if you want to look at it that way, are at $16,740,000, which is an increase year-over-year of
So the rural aid that I just spoke to, and actually, when Ms. Brawna, our student rep, is back, I know she'll have a lot to share. I'll do a little bit tonight, but she actually was at the Rural School Day on the Hill today with State Representative Paul Mark and Senator Heinz, but this year, what Senator Heinz had to secure people work that was done was $1.5 million for an allocation of rural aid. We do know that the formula worked very much so in our favor, and we as a district received the highest award by quite a amount. It was actually, you know, $246,560, wonderful. However, this was an award we really became aware that we were definitely going to receive in December. It had to be spent by June. It had to be spent in this year, and it also had the goal of trying to offset some of the costs of the town, so we really had to think about what we could do now, and obviously there are limitations when it comes in that fashion. I think we had good plan, we did approve the plan. We talked for a while that our elementary schools really could use the security update at the front entryway to allow for people to go into the building, interact with somebody, drop something off, and not need to enter the population where the students are. That is something that we are able to do and avoid a capital cost by doing this over the course of the April vacation with this one-time fund. So we are looking forward to that opportunity. We have consulted with Truba Knada, who is our state trooper who does our safety and security planning for the district. The technology needs, like I mentioned, many of those, we are able to fund in the prior year. We have funds, so those were a great opportunity with rural aid. We also funded some of our technology with our grant funding we currently have available. We've been very fortunate with grants. We are trying to add a fourth special ed teacher. I will be very honest with you, the pool of applicants right now in the county in special education is very challenging, but we are very hopeful that we'll be able to do that sooner than later, so that Craneville has that position in place now. It is budgeted for the fall, and like I mentioned, the special education again. And basically, it's just there's more to come. We really need to look closely at the work being done at the State House to see how this will impact us for next year.
The next two slides detail the expenditure summary broken out by the way that the state or DESI requires us to categorize expenditures. So these are the way that we report our expenditures at the end of the year, and this is how this is broken out on these slides. And you can see that there are some changes in some of the line, the function code, which is how DESI describes each of these program areas. We talked about, this is a bit of an increase here, slight increase, but we do have a new treasurer that came on board this year, so that is the majority of that. The superintendent's line item has gone down because we made some accounting moves for a position that was solely in the superintendent's office. It's now being split between business and superintendent's. And you'll see a lot of these decreases are, can be seen as increases in other areas, so it's really a lot of accounting moves in this. And here's the increase in business and finance technology. Of course, we've talked about that. That's showing a decrease of 28%, but it is now a decrease in purchases for technology. We're simply doing it this year versus putting it into the budget for next year. All of these really don't have too much of a swing except for middle school, and that's where the superintendent talked about teachers moving from the middle school to other schools. You'll see a drop in the expenditures for the middle school, and you'll see an increase a little bit, an increase in elementary where the teachers went, and a little bit of an increase in high school. Special ed, of course, we talked about those increases, transportation out of district expenses, things of that nature, BCBA. The final ones are very much in line. Some of these are just perhaps contractual obligations that we have that show up where you see a little bit of an increase. Guidance, that was the staffing revision with the flip-flop of a .5 to a 1 and the 1 to a .5, and salaries were different. And health is the retirement for the 1.0 to 8.5 during the course of the budget after last year's budget was approved. And then operation and maintenance is really just contract increases of about 2% and calculations for heat and electricity and things like that for next year. Can you go back a little? One important line item to note is benefits. That's actually showing a decrease. This year, we had a 0%, no increase in our premiums for health insurance, and with movement with staff, some retiring moving into the retiree section, and changes in the cost of the plans due to that swing into retiree status, we're showing a decrease in benefits. And the OPEP trust fund is being funded level with last year. We also have other revenue sources that we use and we depend upon to operate the district. The operating budget is the basis of it, but there's also grants and other revolving funds that we use to operate the district each year. So you can see the breakout here. We're anticipating federal, state, and private grants totaling about $1.164 million. Our school choice revenue is higher than our school's choice assessment, so we're in the plus side there. We're, instead of paying, we're seeing revenues coming into the school choice fund. Circuit breaker, which is student services reimbursement, is, I'm anticipating about $200,000. That could be a little conservative, but that percentage change is part of it a few years as time goes on through the year with the state. Athletics and student activities, about 95, and food services, 610, which are pretty equal to what we are seeing this year. Operating expenditures are apportioned by using a five-year rolling average for enrollment of students in the district by town. So you can see here, October 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, five years, five-year total, five-year average. These are the numbers that we will use and the percentages we will use to calculate the operating assessments. The operating assessments currently are at an increase year-over-year of $172,000, 1.08%. And these are the five-year rolling averages and the percentages from the previous slide. And it's broken out by required local contribution or net minimum contribution, transportation assessment, and budget balance assessment. So when we're calculating the assessments, the required local contribution is the amount that the state sets for each town, and it's the minimum that they have to pay, the towns have to pay, to educate the children in their towns. That's set by the state, and it's based upon real estate valuations, it's based upon the income of the residents, a growth factor, inflation factor, and that begins the process of the total assessment for the CBRs, the budget. The transportation assessment is simply transportation costs minus transportation aid multiplied by the percentage. The budget balance assessment is the budget balance, the budget minus the required local contribution, which is set by the state, the difference is multiplied by that percentage, and that figure goes in there. So then you have these three columns here, add up to the net town assessment. Here are all the net town assessments, and you can see the variance here over year and the percentage variance here over year. We also have capital assessments, capital budget each year, and these are the current projects, and they're mature to date, and you can see that we have really three projects coming off in 2022. The four projects, I'm sorry, the feasibility study will be most likely rolled in if the project passes into the construction project, and then the Craneville roof coming off in '23, and Beckett-Washington renovation coming off in '25. So we have quite a few projects now coming off the books in the next couple of years. And these are the assessments. Now, the capital assessments are done, are calculated a little bit differently. Not by rolling average. We take the number of students in each building that has a capital project and multiply it by, come up with a percentage, multiply the debt service that we have to pay by that percentage by building. So we're seeing a slight increase in this because of the feasibility costs that are coming, and we're having to borrow for that, but it's a slight increase, and you can see that each town has, it varies, and this goes by the number of kids or students in each of the buildings, so it can change year-over-year based upon enrollment. But you can see here that the total increase for all towns, 63,63 as a group. Why don't I be the music at the Oscars? And the budget is currently online. It's usually online the next day after. If it requires a vote or approval of the school committee, we put it online the next day. And this, along with the presentation and the budget documents, are online now.
Thank you very much. Does anyone in the public have any questions? Do you have any comments? Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments?
Just a statement, thank you.
All right. In that case, moving on, we will skip the student reports because Hannah is not here tonight, and the next would be the secretary's report. Remember, make a motion to accept the report. Motion's made and seconded to approve minutes of the inaugural meeting of February 14th. Are there any comments or questions? In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, and those minutes are accepted. The next is the financial report. Will a member please make the motion for the report?
Bill resolved warrant number AP 2019-16 dated March 1st, 2019, for accounts payable in the amount of $381,559.62.
Motion's made and seconded to approve warrant AP 2019-16. Are there any questions or comments? In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Are there any abstentions? In that case, the motion is carried.
Bill resolved warrant number PR 2019-17 dated February 21, 2019, for payroll in the amount of $619,614.1.
Motion's made and seconded to approve warrant PR 2019-17. Are there any questions or comments? In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Are there any abstentions? That warrant is approved.
Bill resolved warrant number PR 2019-17D dated February 21, 2019, for accounts payable from agency accounts, payroll deductions in the amount of $237,368.22.
Motion's made and seconded to approve warrant PR 2019-17D. Are there any questions or comments? In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Are there any abstentions? In that case, the warrant is approved. Thank you. I don't believe there are any gifts in the denou, or donations, so the next article is reported to the chair. We continue to have the vacancy from the town of Washington. It would be nice if we had a candidate for that position. Last Thursday night, we had the seven-town advisory meeting that was held here in NESCIS. All seven towns had representatives here. It was very well attended, and the discussion was good. Most of the discussion was about the Wocona project, and the biggest topic there was reimbursement, how that's calculated, and why do the numbers seem to not add up? But it was good discussion, and I think everybody finally understood it. The other part that we spent some time on was the budget, and there were a lot of good questions on that. The topic that was covered to a greater extent than usual was how the individual assessments are calculated, and Melissa did an excellent job of describing the way it's calculated to a much greater extent than we've ever done before, and I think all the town officials were happy with that presentation. Do you want to add anything about that? Our Rich was there. Would you like to add anything about that meeting? Okay.
There was a discussion about the council in the towns, how that all was set up.
I guess that's right, yeah. There was no, everybody understands that. The officials seem to understand that. Any questions about that? Next article, the subcommittee reports, and the first subcommittee is curriculum. Dr. Craft, Grease.
Hi. Well, we met this evening and right before this meeting, and everybody on our committee came, and thanks to Leslie Blake Davis and Debbie White for joining us and answering some of our questions. So we talked about an overview of the mid-year benchmark data from Edge Elastics, and Leslie had a graph for us that, and basically, it showed that in ELA, the expectation is at this point, they would be at about 50% because of the amount of materials that have been covered so far, and most of the grades were at that point. Science also was pretty much on target. Math, however, was not, and they're looking at, they're looking into another math program, perhaps, moving away from perhaps, moving away from, okay, Rico math is what they're going towards.
Investigation.
Right?
Investigation.
Okay. They're piloting into schools, and hopefully that will prove to be effective. Invisions is a program they're currently using, and they are not having as much success with that. Then Debbie talked to us about the progress regarding the turnaround status at Nessus, and she told us where they are on the list of things that they need to do, and they have talked about stakeholder engagement, and they've reached out to not just teachers and students, but also community members, and they're looking for common themes. One of the things that they're talking about now is assessment of assets and challenges, and they're looking for, really analyzing the data. And one of the things that came up that was very interesting was that there is a significant difference between girls' and boys' performance at the middle school years. And we were kind of thinking about all the ways in which we could interpret that, like why? They weren't different in Craneville, or in Beckett-Washington, or in Kittredge, but then they came here, and they're different. And then they go to the high school, and there, the gap isn't there. So what is it about middle school years that's causing the gap?
And that's not a statewide thing, that's our district.
It's our district, yes. Just middle school, it's typically seventh grade. Yes.
Where's the difference?
The girls are outperforming the boys.
The boys are seeing a significant difference.
It's a significant difference. So we were talking about, you know, developmental issues, we were talking about...
Is that just this year, or is that year-over-year same issue?
They're looking at the data, but they said that for the last two years at least it's been that consistent. Am I right, Deb?
Two years in a row.
Two years in a row. So we're both boys in that.
Why is it college boys?
Anyway, we are seriously looking at that, and, you know, we do know that we're going to continue to talk about Nessus at each meeting because it's important, and we feel a sense of urgency, and we understand that things take time, but we don't have a lot of time. And so it must be tough, I said to Leslie, to balance going slowly and being thorough with a sense of urgency. So that's the dilemma that we have. Our next meeting is March 14th, and...
No, just to make a comment on the, you know, boys versus girls. Obviously, in middle school, I mean, hormones are raging, and all the thing, right? I don't know whether there's any chance or not, but I mean, it used to be was the girls underperformed best in science and math because they didn't want to look like geeks in front of the boys.
Right.
And single-sex education was a way to kind of, kind of resolve that. I wonder if it's flipping for some reason, but, I mean, is there a way to have an all-girl math, all-boy math? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there as a, as a way to separate that so there's none of that, you know, imagery going on.
If the girls, if we just looked at the girl population, female population, they would be at the state level, not below. But when we consider males and females, they're a lot lower. And because it's not a statewide issue, it's hard to support that argument that it, you know, hormones and...
Because we're doing same-sex education.
Yeah, it's something just, something here that's happening. So we were talking about engagement, we were talking about attendance, we were talking about our kids, our boys disbehaving, and going painful that a class more. So those are all things that they're looking at, and we will get back to them.
It'll be interesting.
It really is. I've never heard of this before, I'm above my years, so this is a new one. Anyway, we will begin on March 14th, and Nessus will continue to be on our list as well as working at benchmarks and making sure that we're progressive.
Good, thank you. Are there any questions? In that case, the subcommittee is finance.
Okay, so our meeting was Tuesday, the 26th, and the two things that were on our agenda were the CBRSD fiscal 20 final budget, and basically those figures in the final budget are consistent with the tentative budget. The next item that we talked about was the second quarter financial reports, and that information was one of your products. And Melissa explained any of the variables, so we were satisfied with the explanation. Our next meeting, the date has not been determined yet, and at that meeting, we will be talking about the audit and about the OPAD stats.
Do we want to discuss the quarterly report, or just solicit questions?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the quarterly report if you have any.
All right, let's keep going. The next subcommittee is policy, Mr. Ed Meyer.
Our next meeting is scheduled for March 19th, 5:30, to review and update strategic plan. No meeting has happened prior.
Okay. I have nothing on personnel. Next is safety and wellness.
We have not met, but we're scheduled to meet on March 19th at Central Berkeley Organization.
Same night as policy?
Yes, following policy.
The next is the Wacona building project. Is there anything to talk about there?
I can report that we met earlier today to certify the minutes, which was a required step for the MSBA from the meeting that happened prior to vacation, which the final financials, schematic design, the entire package was approved for submittal by the school committee and the school building committee. So all of those steps are done. The next step will be a visit to the MSBA in a couple of weeks, where we will get into some specific questions, answer any questions they have, have a lot of dialogue with them. And that is prior to their final vote, which happens the second week in April after our vote. So they will do their final approval then. Just dates to note, there are a lot of community outreach going on. Tom Callahan has organized a lot of it, Bonnie has participated in a lot of it, Rich, a lot of people giving a lot of their time to get out there into the select boards, into different community groups. There's an advocacy group that started at Wacona under Jared Shannon for people who want to get interested in that and contribute. Next week are the community evenings at, first ones at Wacona on the 5th, followed by Windsor.
Yes.
And then at Kittredge on the 7th, followed by Beckett, 5:30 and 7 o'clock starts. In the middle, on March 6th, we, 5 o'clock start, I'm sorry, and then an hour and a half presentation, half an hour travel. Five to six, you're gonna have to look on the website to make sure you have it right. We just know we have half an hour to travel. But on the 6th, which is the night in between, there is an event for families at Wacona. It's really open to all families, but it primarily targets K-6 parents, but we're hosting it at Wacona to encourage families to get to Wacona, and Aaron Robb will be offering tour number 5,007,000 or something like that, prior to the event and immediately after, with babysitting to cover the span of the tours, the event, and the tours to follow. So hopefully, we get a turnout for that as well.
I have a question about materials available for us to distribute to our communities.
Oh, great, thank you, Barbara. So we do have a trifold that really breaks down all of the information and directs people to the website. So just email the office and let us know how many you want. It's purely informational, so we can provide it that way. There's also, it's worth getting in touch with Jared Shannon and following the families for Wacona on Facebook and Twitter, because they have more promotional material they can give out. So ours are informational, but we see the lawn signs, anything advocacy is from Jared Shannon's group.
Yes.
Yes, yep, those are important, too.
I just wanted to recognize that the town Callahan's Road Show, as he calls it, is going to each and every town in the district at least once. So, you know, this effort should really be applied for coordinating that effort. It's really important to get in front of the select boards because they are the leadership of the towns, and having been involved, Rich has been involved as well, you know, it's been a positive experience so far, so we're pressing our efforts that it will continue.
There really is no excuse for anybody in the public not knowing about the project. The next opportunity is next week, particularly on Tuesday and Thursday, there will be meetings in four of the towns that the public is invited to. And at that time, they'll get not only a pitch, but they'll be able to ask the architect questions on why it's this way and why it's not that way, and what was considered, what wasn't considered. But this is a place to get the facts instead of rumors. So I would hope that there are good attendance to all four of those meetings. Moving on, the next article is the superintendent's report.
Great, so the first topic on my report, as I had mentioned, is rural schools and the Act to Ensure Fair Funding for Rural Schools. So definitely take a close look at that. It'll be covered in the Berkshire Eagle Eye, anticipated over the course of the spring. I did try to break down for you in the chart exactly what Senator Hines is proposing and what kind of an impact it would have on Central Berkshire. So again, the rural aid is based on the original $9 million figure. He ended up getting $1.5 million funded last year. There's also a change in the formula, because there absolutely were, as a district that received quite a bit of funds, in all fairness, there were some districts that you would have expected to see on that list, or even higher up on that list across the state. So they relooked at the formula to make sure they were meeting the needs of all rural school districts. It's still a very generous outcome for us if it's fully funded, and a generous outcome for us if it is funded at any level below that. So it's broken down there for you. I did mention that there was a Rural School Day on the Hill today, and Jared Shannon, always a willing participant, was kind enough to accompany three students from Wacona to the Rural Day on the Hill. If you are on Twitter, there have been pictures that are just awesome, they're having, they had such a great day. Senator Hines and State Representative Paul Mark both met with them, they spent time at the State House, they had lunch with the legislators, they were really able to talk about their perspective as students in rural schools, and learn about what specifically Senator Hines is trying to accomplish through the rural aid bills that he has been bringing forward. So Hannah, who I know sometimes we don't fully get to know the students as well, even though they sit with us for the course of the year, Hannah is an amazing student and is always willing to participate and cares so much about, about really understanding what's going on. So she was down there today, she tweeted about it, she's excited to share it with you. The reason she's not here tonight, I think sometimes we, you know, there's so many things for us to worry about, from funding to the building project to test scores, but some of the amazingness of our students. So Hannah was down at the State House all day today, participating in this day of government, and tonight, she's with two other students, two students who sit on our Equity and Diversity Committee, at the Berkshire Eagle Conversation Series that's on race and a variety of topics being held at Taconic High School. So we had several students, Mr. Robb is there, Mr. Shannon is there, go to participate, to be in the audience and to hear what was said. But Hannah is actually on the panel with Grace Moriarty and Dylan Redd, two students who are on our Equity and Diversity Staring Pretty. So we were very fortunate, we had three students step up and say, I not only want to go, but I'm going to sit on a panel onstage at Taconic and share my perspective as a young person in the community. So really awesome. So she'll be here at our next meeting, and I know she will be, please do ask her questions, and I hope you hear her voice, because she has a voice that's definitely worth hearing. I will talk next time about my day yesterday, because I certainly have some things to share. But I did, I took the plunge. Mr. Robb, of course, was the early adopter, the first one to join the movement, and Mr. Messina followed suit, so I figured I'd better do so as well, and I followed a student, Dylan Redd, they invited me to spend the day with them yesterday at Wacona, senior student who took a very different schedule of classes than I ever would have selected. So very much so out of my comfort zone. It is a long day, with limited opportunity for food, bathroom breaks, and they don't, it doesn't faze them. And as I was, like, counting the seconds, she was still, they were still fully engaged, and then announced that I was welcome to join them for theater practice, which was gonna go until about 5:00 p.m. So I was making a quick beeline for Starbucks. But it was really, it is just eye-opening to see from their perspective, what it's like to sit in their seats, what it's like to travel the hallways, how good it feels to walk in in the morning, not sure where you're going, and how Kathy Grady is standing at the entryway greeting kids, going into what they call this intersection and seeing Steve Messina standing there making sure you can pass. So little things that you kind of notice when you're in the crowd. I will certainly share more of, but it's a valuable experience that gives you a completely different perspective. And the teachers treated me very differently than they do if I go in to observe. So when we went to Mrs. Clausick's math class first period, she just handed me my packet and kept on, kept on moving. There was no, oh, superintendent's here! No. Get to work. Which was exactly what I wanted, and it was excellent. So again, the equity and diversity work, there's a lot going on with that, but the biggest thing I really want you to be aware of that is tonight, is the Conversation Series being held by the Berkshire Eagle. Warren Duse had chaired it with our district, and I look forward to hearing how it's going right now. I will defer the rest of my presentation with the exception of I do want to do a vote on school choice. You do have the October 1 numbers to our team of us professionals who are going to talk about instructional coaching. But school choice right now, you have the numbers in front of you. We are open for school choice in all grade levels based on the class size that we are trying to maintain. However, if you dive into grades, there's a couple grades in a couple buildings we're not open. But what we announce is we are open, because we don't say we're open for 4th grade at Craneville and Beckett and not Kittredge. What happens sometimes is a parent will apply, and they'll have a preference, but then we can have dialogue with them. If there is, for example, you know, a classroom like, there is one right now at Kittredge. It's also important to remember, this is a snapshot time. One student moves, three students choice out somewhere else, we now have room again. So we say we are open in all grade levels because we can welcome kids into our district in all grade levels, knowing that there are times that we would have to have a conversation and say, we can't offer you 1st grade at Kittredge, we'd be happy to talk to you about Craneville, Beckett-Washington, would you like to talk to the principals there? And knowing that this chart right here could change tomorrow if I have students moving their out. But we have a lot of interest already in school choice. So it definitely has been a benefit to move this discussion up to now. That was a good move.
Up to this date?
Yes.
We advanced this date in the last year in the policy.
So my recommendation is, is that we continue to monitor this chart, we continue to stay within the class sizes we've discussed, and we open for school choice and start looking at the applications, which we can do so beginning tomorrow, and notify families within the next couple of weeks, and then we keep watching the chart.
Would a member please make this motion that's shown on the agenda?
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the school choice openings for the 2019-2020 school year as recommended by the superintendent.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendations. Are there any questions about school choice, about the motion, about the table?
Do you actively promote school choice, or is it just whatever class calls?
So we do advertise in the Eagle, we do add it to our website, but not the, really not on the level that you see Pittsfield doing. That's really the district that I've seen really actively advertise.
Any more questions or comments? In that case, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is carried.
So the last part of my report, I just want to introduce really quick and kind of frame it, and then they're, they're a great show themselves. So we really, we've talked about instructional coaching, we've funded it through the budget, we've supported it, we've indicated it's one of our high-leverage methodologies that we really feel is impacting not only teacher performance, student performance, elevating the culture around, around teaching and learning. We really wanted, Leslie Blake-Davis could do a presentation for you on instructional coaching. She really piloted this in this district, she piloted it at Beckett-Washington, expanded it to the elementary. But we really wanted you to hear all perspectives. Leslie's perspective as an administrator who really has rolled this out, has gotten some of the training in place, the structures. Patty Robey, who you approved a position last year that resulted in, Patty Robey, Patty Robey, what it is like to be an instructional coach full-time, to live this full-time. Sean Theryn as well has done incredible amounts of instructional coaching modeling at a K-12 perspective, which is even more interesting. And then we also really felt it was important to have a teacher perspective, so we're So we're going to tell you about what it's like to coach, what it's like to be coach. So Colleen Trager, who is our 5th grade teacher at Beckett-Washington, was kind enough to join the team. So there, ready to go.
So instructional coaching at Central Berkshire, at the heart of it, and I think this is really important to remember, is that every decision a coach, this is kind of our creed, that every decision a coach makes, every action a coach takes means an improvement in the quality of teaching in order to improve the quality of student learning. So it all goes back to student learning. Why would we coach? So I'm going to give you sort of the bullets and then Sean's going to give you sort of a more practical analogy, but we, it's really to provide frequent feedback for teachers to improve their craft. So it's outside of the evaluation and the observation system. So if you think about principals going in to observe and evaluate teachers, that might happen a couple of times a year. Really probably it's good feedback, but in reality, if you're going to grow your practice, it needs to be more frequent than that. But coaching is really non-evaluative feedback. It's really a relationship that develops between somebody who's an expert in teaching practices and in teaching content and develops a nice trusting relationship with a teacher and there's ongoing conversation around student learning and how we can change our practice or what we can do to improve student learning. It's actually, it's oftentimes referred to as sort of this student-learning-teacher cycle. To increase student performance, to ensure teaching to the standards, that's really, really important. We're always going back to the standards when we coach to provide guidance around the consistent and appropriate pacing and sequencing with the standards. That's important too. We want to make sure we're on track and ensure that we are meeting the needs of all students in inclusive settings. Teachers have really, really huge responsibilities. It's a huge job. This is an infrastructure and a support system for teachers.
So the content coordinators have been doing a book study about coaching and one of the early chapters was talking about this question, why coaching? And it mentioned how elite athletes and actors and singers, they hire coaches to help them. Now, we can't hire at that kind of a level that every teacher has their own coach, but just speaking from personal experience, I get excited when Aaron Robb or Leslie comes into my classroom to give me some feedback, how do I get better at my job? And I think for a lot of teachers, we're so focused on our students and all the busyness of the day that that self-reflection piece is hard and if you have a conversation with somebody else about that self-reflection piece, it can be really valuable.
So just some different roles that an instructional coach will take, showing teachers effective teaching strategies. So as an instructional coach, you really have to have a pretty robust toolbox of instructional strategies. Analyzing teachers' students as learners and determining their strengths and needs. So we're all looking at students, but the instructional coach is really looking at all students and saying, what do these students need individually? And that's where it all goes back to, again, having inclusive settings. We teach to all students. Again, that's really hard and this is a support system for being able to do that. So it's this teachers who are making decisions with the student at the center. It's what can we do to make sure that students are learning? How do we change our practice to meet students' needs? We don't ask students to change for us. We change to meet their needs. And this process really emphasizes that. To collaboratively analyze data to plan whole and small group instruction. Coaching, instructional coaching at Central Berkshire always goes back to our strategic plan. So just keep in mind that part of our, a central part of our strategic plan is to provide an inclusive educational environment for all learners to attain social, emotional, and academic success. One of the things that's really important for an instructional coach is to really be able to talk to the what and the how of teaching. The instructional coach assists teachers in making decisions about what students need to know. So this is particularly important. It's important in all areas. Sean's role really made me think of it because when we were rolling out, as we rolled out our new science program, science is a pretty intense subject from my perspective. And the what, what we need to teach in science, and then there's also that sort of pedagogical piece and how we teach it. And that's pretty, that can be really tricky, particularly with the adoption of the new, these new science programs. I'm going to let Sean talk a little bit about that.
So when we were first adopting this program, we got teachers together to look at some of the different programs that were out there and we ended up going with FAWSS because it's a very hands-on, experimental-based program. And so we had some pilot teachers who tried it out and then we shared that information with other teachers. We've kind of rolled it out over time, but one of my responsibilities has been to go and model lessons for teachers to show how students can be better engaged in scientific thought and the process that goes with that. So over the last three years, I've been with most teachers two or three times, some seven or eight times, depending on what the topic was and how difficult the particular kit is. And we've had some really good success. Our science numbers are starting to go up. I think kids are more excited about science, they're more engaged. And although we weren't planning on it at the time, it really was a coaching model that we were using. We figured out what we needed to teach, how to do it, and have teacher support for implementing.
Well, does instructional coaching look like it's very individualistic? There are a lot of different ways that we plan at instructional coaching. Facilitating lesson plans. It can be a group of teachers that are working together to plan a lesson. Asking questions like, where are we in terms of pacing with the standards? What is, what is the skill we're going to teach? And what are the strategies that we're going to teach students in order to get to the, to become proficient with a skill? What is our modeling going to look like? What is direct instruction going to look like? What is student practice and engagement going to look like? What is our criteria for success? Those are all parts of lesson planning. It's a lot and it's complicated. So it is helpful to have this infrastructure supporting that. As Sean was mentioning, modeling lessons, you know, modeling lessons with some of those new FAWSS science kits was tricky. Co-teaching lessons. Oftentimes a coach will plan with a teacher and actually teach with them. Coaching in, which is tricky, but Patty and Colleen are going to talk about this in a minute because they are so good at it. And then debriefing focused on the impact of student learning. So after a lesson's taught together, what did that look like? Like what do we think about how the students responded to what we taught? That is so important. And facilitating data analysis, really on a daily basis. We can do that daily when you see your students and how they're responding to your teaching to determine student growth toward grade level benchmarks. But I'm going to turn it over. This part is really, yeah, the coaching in part, the coaching in, coaching, is probably
the, it's done in real time. So a teacher and a coach are in a lesson and sometimes the coach doesn't even know exactly what the lesson, in an ideal, in an ideal world, we would have planned the lesson together and we would be almost, not really co-teaching, but the teacher would be taking the lead in the teaching and the coach would be coaching the teacher in real time. And it's kind of hard to describe in words without seeing it, but it's being able to push in, if a teacher were questioning students, to be able to push in to that questioning to maybe raise the level of the kinds of questions that the teacher is asking or even to elicit different responses from the students than what the teacher is getting at that moment.
Having a different perspective too. When Patty's coming into our classroom, we have these students in front of us every single day.
Right.
So she's able to almost once see them in a different, a different perspective, but sometimes she's able to pull things out of them that they won't necessarily come forward and say when they're, when they're in their group. And you kind of can push them a little farther, which is really nice. She's also another set of eyes for me. You know, when you have 21 or 22 or in some cases 24 students sitting in front of you, she can see some of the things that are happening in the room that I won't necessarily pick up the first time. So when we get to that piece of the debriefing, it's having another set of eyes, which is invaluable.
Right. And I think that, I think that coaching in part, for me as a coach, the exciting part of it is being able to, like in that moment, in that very moment, provide a tip for that teacher to ramp up their teaching, to better their teaching, to make their teaching better right then there. It's not something that we have to wait for tomorrow or the next day. It's in the moment. I do have to say that coaching in requires a real level of trust. It's not something that I do with all teachers that I work with. I think that, again, it's some, you really have to have a trusting relationship. They have to trust that I'm not being critical, that I'm not, you know, making a judgment on them, but we're doing this to the students.
Well, and I think that also comes from the point of view, we're educators and we love to learn. I don't think we would be doing this job without having that passion. So you have to take yourself out of that equation. The most important piece are the students in front of you. So if there's something that I can do and I can change or shift that's going to up their intake of the information or how they can present that information, that's the overall goal. So again, it really isn't about me, it's about my craft. And we're always working on providing the best education we can give to students. So having someone, and I've been lucky, I've been able to work with Sean and Patty. And I worked with Patty even before she was a coach, she was a coworker. I went from a school where I had other teachers in my grade level to a school where all of a sudden I was the only 3rd grade teacher, not the only 5th grade teacher, that it was very commonplace in Beckett to have Patty walk in in the middle of my daily lesson when her kids were at specialist and kind of watch and give some feedback in real time. So it's something that we're lucky that we do often and I think the fact that this is now coming throughout the entire district is really beneficial for teachers and for students. It's exciting.
And just, you know, again, back to sort of what is at the heart of coaching, it's about our students who look to us, to their teachers, to their school, community for an education. And really, I like this quote, it's sort of keeping an eye on the prize because an eye on the prize is educating all students and they inspire and lead instructional improvement. And that's what we do. And as you can tell, I think that we're all very passionate about this work. And just maybe, just to sort of conclude, I think we'll just each give you sort of a little bit of an overview of the coaching responsibilities that each of we have, that each of us have. I primarily do some coaching at the elementary level. I almost, so both Kathy Buckley and Mary Kay McCuskey are coaches in their building. I oftentimes coach the coach and we will go in together and do that in real time. And then at the, at Craneville, Annie and I similarly do this work, but we also, a lot of times we meet with grade level teams and we will meet and plan a lesson and sometimes it's co-planning, planning a co-teaching lesson. We go into a classroom together. Teachers usually take notes on what we planned on as the lesson is being taught. And when we finish, we have a debrief. So we really talk about what we saw the students doing, what the effect of our strategies were. And the intent is that everybody walks away with something else in their toolbox, thinking about what, how is my practice different as a result of what just happened, as a result of this collaboration?
So I've mentioned at the elementary schools, it's mostly been modeling lessons for K-5. At the middle school, we've done a couple of different things. We've done some planning sessions together. We've done a couple of observational coaches and the debrief is definitely the most important part about that. You get a chance to talk about the craft of teaching, which is something that we don't set aside time for on a daily basis and it's a really important thing. We have so much talent in our district, but how do you share that talent? And a coach who sees it going on in multiple classrooms can say, oh, I saw this strategy yesterday in this class, this might help in this situation. And it's been, it's been really great. I feel like especially at the middle school, our department has gotten a little closer because of this. At the high school, we're just starting coaching and I'm doing one of the models that is new in that book that we've been reading about where the teacher picks the metrics. So you give them a list of things and the teacher says, okay, I want to work on engagement today. Give me feedback about engagement. And it's really a, I kind of like the model as a first step into coaching because the teacher's in charge. They're saying, here's what I want some help with. And I think it takes a little bit of the scariness of having another adult in your classroom, which can be intimidating for some people. And so we're just rolling that out with the high school science people right now.
And I'm the instructional, a full-time instructional coach here at Nasekis in grades six through eight, working with all of our ELA teachers and math teachers. My role includes grade alike and subject alike planning. So in the course of about six days, I plan with what I call mid-6th grade math teachers and mid-6th grade ELA teachers. So we meet regularly to plan a lesson that's coming up. We talk about, you know, possible strategies that they use. We sort of, we deconstruct the lesson. We talk about, you know, what might be some things that might present challenges, possible strategy groups to try. Teachers go out and do those lessons. The best-case scenario is that I can be also part of that lesson. It doesn't always work that way, but a lot of times it does. And then I'm allowed, then I can watch the lesson, take part in the lesson as a co-teacher sometimes, and then go back and debrief with them. The debriefing scheduling part is a little tricky, but it, you know, it is like Sean said, and the debriefing is really where that learning happens or that, you know, the reflection time happens. So I do the planning, I'm in classrooms, helping, watching, observing, giving tips, co-teaching, I mean, really whatever is needed to lift the level of teaching in that classroom to better serve the students better in front of those teachers. I do a lot of data analysis in order to, you know, in preparation for planning the lessons. We pay attention to pacing, making sure that we're covering the standards. Gosh, what was I going to say? You're like, there's more to it than that.
Well, one of the things I was going to say too for both Sean and Patty is even if they're not in your classroom, they're always there, providing resources, emailing, phone calls, try this, it didn't work, what do you suggest? I think the fact that even if they're not able to be right in your room, they're constantly a resource to us and providing us with additional materials to help. And I think that that's kind of a tip on Master Borg. And they've also had opportunities where now we can go into colleagues' classrooms and we can see coaching and observe coaching in time. And I think that's important as well.
Any more questions?
Sure. It's, you know, with the new high school, we have this educational plan, going to an interdisciplinary model and project-based learning. Is, are some of the, and that's happening at the high school level. And it seems to me it would be a little bit of a shock if we don't have some of that going on at the elementary and the middle school though, we just jump to that model in the high school. Is some of what you guys are doing, is it kind of changing the way we're teaching kids to a more interdisciplinary approach a little bit?
Well, I think that the nature of coaching is that it creates a collaborative environment. And if you're going to do anything interdisciplinary, the teachers have to have a good collaborative relationship so that they can plan together to do those kinds of things. So I think we're building the foundation for that model.
I just wanted to say how important that reflection tool is, to be able to think about the lesson that you just taught, share that with another person, another set of eyes. To me, it was the way in which teachers grew most quickly.
Well, I'm very impressed and very
Well, I'm very impressed and very enthusiastic about the whole thing. And I know it's been, we've been doing it probably three, four years at this point, and it's gotten better and better. And that's very encouraging. Are other, what extent are other districts engaging in co-teaching?
Co-teaching?
Co-teaching.
Co-teaching. Co-teaching happens, I know, at Beckett. Are we talking about co-teaching or coaching?
Coaching.
Oh, okay, okay. She knows this. I mean, as a coach, I do coach.
I'm concerned with other districts. You know, is it a buzzword?
I actually spend a day in Fitzfield with one of their coaches, learning from her. She's been doing it longer than I have, and she was a wealth of information. So, you know, Leslie has a lot of connections with Fitzfield School District. So that's how that came to be. It was a great day. I mean, it was amazing to see the things that are in place for coaches as well as just, you know, what the moves that they make as coaches.
So, so it must be broader, is it be the East District?
Yes, yes. So I think also, Mr. LaCattell, just to give you the perspective, this really was in many ways Metro West. So you know Katie Novak and Kristin Rodriguez, who have done all of the UDL work here in the district. Grattan Dunsborough has had a coaching model for five to seven years. You would hear it in a lot of the Metro West communities. There's more of an instructional coach capacity. The names of what people are, so a lot of districts don't call people department heads anymore, but they actually are doing instructional coaching. But yes, like, if you were to look, for example, on the Cape, Bourne has instructional coaches. I don't know beyond that, but I wouldn't be surprised. But Metro West, there are a lot of instructional coaching models. So it's kind of, it's definitely an intervention tool that has become part of trying to close some gaps. But it's definitely a tool that's in place at some high, high-performing districts as well as tier one. Sometimes it's hardest to fund, because you've got to fund tier three. You have grant fund to fund tier two. And to begin with, it was really some of the wealthiest districts that had some money to fund tier one.
It's also in New York State. Unfortunately, though, in New York State, it's the first thing that goes when the budgets go down.
Yeah, it does, it is, I don't want to say expensive, but it is an additional cost.
When I originally started teaching in Fitzfield over 10 years ago, we had instructional coaches in math and in reading. They were part-time, and the same thing happened. But I had the experience, been for several years teaching, had a coaching, and it was really helpful. I don't think we had the debriefing piece. It wasn't as usable at that point, but I know that they continue to use it, and it's been really helpful.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's been a great evening. Is that the end of the, does anybody want to speak to the official enrollment that apparently are in front of us? Are they there just for the record? Any questions about that data? In that case, we'll go to personnel. And the retirement Peter O'Brien is listed. Is there any old business, which is business that we've talked about tonight, anything that we need to add to that or change, revisit? Is there any new business? New businesses, businesses not on the agenda, but we may have to consider because there's an emergency or some time-sensitive nature to it, or any requests for something to be put on the agenda? Any new business? Any remarks for the good of the committee? I would just like to note that next, at the next meeting, which is March 14th, is when we adopt the final budget. And that requires the two-thirds of the 15 members of the committee we need. So we need 10 members here. So even if you've got pneumonia, please come. We don't have a lot of excess capacity here, so.
Are we going to know to set up a phone?
As of right now, we don't need to. But we certainly will consider it over the next couple of weeks. It may happen. Yeah, I know both Bonnie and you will not be here, but everybody else has got to be in his seat. Okay, the last item is the nomination of a chair of the school committee. And let me clarify a couple of things. First of all, Sean resigned as chair, not as a member of the school committee. And in fact, Sean is at the Equity and Diversity Meeting that's going on at the Berkshire Book tonight. That's why he's not here. So first of all, would somebody like to nominate a chair for the next eight months?
I'd like to. I'd like to read a nominating statement. Dr. Craft Reese has exemplified leadership and role as the curriculum sub-chair, chair, subcommittee chair, excuse me, and has been a vital contributor to the new negotiations subcommittee and on various special projects she has demonstrated her willingness to volunteer during her tenure on the school committee. Barbara has demonstrated her commitment to the education of the district's children and has established an excellent rapport with Superintendent Kazma. Therefore, it is my honor to nominate Dr. Craft Reese to serve as the new chair of the Central Berkshire Regional School District School Committee and hope that my school committee colleagues will support her nomination.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for chair? In that case, would a member move that nominations be closed? Okay, the nominations are closed, and we'll take a ballot. And the ballot is required by state law. It is not a secret ballot. But we'll go through the motions to comply. I guess I forgot, and I know I would. Would you like to make a statement?
Oh, well, shall we wait to see if I'm elected? So thank you, Bonnie, for those very kind words. I did a lot of soul searching over the weekend, and it wasn't Sean's resignation. I'm excited about this, and I would hope that I have the support of everybody here to help me, because I'm new, and there's a very big shoes I have to fill. First, Sean, and Dick, and so I hope that I have the skills necessary and I can have the support. Thank you.
Thank you. My guess is it's unanimous. All right, congratulations. And with that business is completed, excuse me.
Oh, sorry, don't we need a vice chair, or is that space?
You can impeach, but. I look forward to continuing as vice chair. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Say aye. We are adjourned.